I'd like to call this meeting of the Stockbridge Planning Board on April 26th to order. Thank you all for attending. I guess Wayne is having a little technical difficulty, but he will join us as soon as he can. Our consultant Jeff Lacy is with us. And as you've seen in the agenda, the first item, as we discussed in our last meeting, first item for this meeting is Q and As with Jeff.
Would you please introduce the, also introduce the planning board members who are here?
Marie, Nancy, you, Kate, Christine, and myself.
Thank you.
And various members of the public. So Jeff, you have some questions and some answers. I think, would you like to just dive right in? Or how would you like to? How would the board like to proceed if anybody on the board may not have submitted questions through Jennifer? And you have questions now. This is the time to ask them and get get answers.
So I didn't get Jennifer's notice in time to make the deadline, but I do have some some questions, but I can wait. There's, I'll let others go first.
Okay. Well, one question I had Jeff, and I know we've, I think we've addressed this in the past. Leaving aside the open space part of your bylaw in a development, what is the difference between cluster zoning and the arrangement of residences in a typical NHRPZ zoned project?
Wow. Just a half an hour ago, I was writing an email to my Massachusetts planning colleagues explaining exactly what the difference was between cluster zoning, which is OSRD and NRZ. And I said something, cluster zoning has been around for quite a while. And what cluster zoning does, there's been a couple of different levels of it. I think Randall's OSRD is probably the most highly evolved version of cluster zoning around. But what it does is it just takes what would be a conventional subdivision based on the zoning that's in place. And takes the same number of houses and locates them on a portion of the property instead of all of the property. And preserves the rest as open space. So the lots, lot sizes are, instead of being two or three or four acres, they're shrunk to some degree. And because of that shrinking, other land is available for open space and it goes into open space. That's cluster. It's just taking housing that would be all over the place and clustering it. And the rest is open space. And that's generally in Massachusetts offered as an option either by, by right. You know, put side by side with conventional subdivision or the OSRD subdivision. Or in some towns who are a little nervous about it, they require a special permit. But again, generally as an option. Natural resource protection zoning is not cluster zoning. It is, it, it, it can produce a similar result. It generally, it generally produces less units, less housing units than, than before. And more open space than you can otherwise get in, in cluster zoning generally. Natural resource protection zoning, instead of relying on the underlying zoning to establish how many houses are going to be allowed, is its own zoning and it applies to all subdivisions. So this is the zoning for a subdivision. So when a subdivision is proposed in the R40 or the R80 district, this NRZ and HRZ applies to that subdivision. And within that, it has its own density regime and it doesn't have anything to do with the zoning that that predated it. And often, in fact, in every one of these I've worked on in past in Massachusetts, it's, it's been a bit density negative and but with high degrees of open space preserve up to 80%, which you seldom see in cluster.
Okay. Thank you.
And a number of months ago, we had a discussion here and you folks could have sent me off in the direction of NRZ with some OSRD elements. And I've worked with Randall to try to introduce many of those OSRD elements into this. But this is basically an NRZ model that we're working on here that I've drafted for you. I also got a question from, let's see, from Marie maybe? Yeah, about, about different types of housing. Right now, as I understand it, in the R40 and R80, single family dwellings are allowed by right. And one can apply for a special permit for a duplex in, in those districts. And I don't see that changing if this is passed. So single family by right, two family by special permit.
I guess, I guess my question Jeff was, is it, if, if we had the same kind of density that we would have, is it possible to do condos or some, I mean, I think there are people in town that would like to, maybe are ready to sell their home, but want to stay in town and would rather live in like a condo or something. Is that possible to be, I don't mean, I don't mean change the density of what we would do, but just different styles of housing for different purposes, maybe? You know, like an older couple that wants to sell their house, they don't want to take care of a house. So they wouldn't build another house, but they'd like to have a condo or a townhouse or something. Is that possible?
Well, condominium is, is not a specific type of house or dwelling.
Or arrangement, I guess.
It, it, it's an ownership regime.
Right.
And with a condo, my understanding is you own the house that you live in, but the moment you step out of that house, you're on, you're on common property. There, there are no yards in condos. So you belong to a condominium, condominium association that does all the yard work and the, the street work and the sidewalks and whatever. And, and you just own your home that you're living in. And if Stockbridge was interested in that type of, of ownership regime, I'm not sure if you have them already there and you like them. I can't see any reason why you couldn't have single family homes in a condominium ownership regime. If that's what you wanted.
I don't know. It just seems like that's what's, seems to be selling around this area. It seems like that's where people tend to be headed at the moment. If we're looking down the road, I don't know if, if we could have both. A combination of different kinds of housing?
Usually, usually condominiums are associated with multi-family dwellings. You know, two, three, four family dwellings where again, everyone owns a piece of that building.
Right.
Single family condominium, you'd own the whole single family dwelling. In a multi-family condominium, you'd own that portion that's, you know, up to your firewall.
I guess, I guess maybe I mean multi-family kind of housing because it feels, the people I talked to in town seem to feel that they might want to sell their home, but still stay in town and have something like that to, to buy into. I mean, I don't know. I was just wondering if that would be legal and if.
I, I, I think you can certainly, it can certainly be written so that any types of housing that you're comfortable with, any, any housing style that you're comfortable with can be allowed in there.
I don't know.
Just so long as the, as the overall unit count is not exceeded.
Right, right.
Or, but then the question becomes, who's going to build that? Is that profitable enough to build rather than building four or five bedroom huge, single family dwellings, which are, are like Cadillacs and Hummers, you know, they're GM makes more money off of those than, than, than Little Priuses.
I don't know. And maybe the, our committee would have a feeling on whether we wanted to do something like that. I just feel that around here, that seems to be at the moment, the trend.
To incentivize it. Yeah, there are ways to incentivize that type of thing where if you say for every, for every multi-family, multi-family unit or, or structure built there, or for every two or three or four of them, they'll, they'd get an extra single, they'd get an extra development, right? You know, that's sort of the way density, the last time we got rid of all the density bonuses, but that's what you do with density bonuses, you encourage things that you want. And you, you encourage it with options for a little more development on their part. If you're asking them to build things that aren't quite as profitable, then you need to give them something.
Yeah, I wasn't really thinking of that. I was just think, I was just thinking of the way people would be able to stay in town and still sell their home, which would make another house available in Stockbridge. It seems like there's a feeling toward that. Like I said, I don't know how our committee feels about that. I haven't talked to any of you guys, but I think it's something maybe we want to think about if it's possible. I didn't know if it was legal or able to do it that way.
Can you have both? Can you have single family homes, like a mixture of single family homes and condos at the same time?
That's what I meant. I didn't mean a condo development.
I think we should use the term apartments, not condos.
Yeah. Oh, there you go.
Let's do multi-family or whatever the term is. But I just feel that we could do single family, two family, maybe if by special permit and, and some other kinds of dwelling. Because I feel that's kind of the way right now the market's going.
You could have a range, you know, within certain limits, you could have a range of everything from multi-family to duplex to small, single family, you know, with only two bedrooms. And then the full size, single family on even larger lots because, because you were very efficient in citing the multi-family. You, you don't need as much land for them. So then you could go everything from, you know, kind of an estate-like house down to a multi-family condominium ownership.
That was, that was my question. Thank you, Jeff.
That is possible. If that's what you wish, I can certainly write that for you.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can certainly talk about it. If anybody else has that same feeling, I don't know.
But with, with things like this, I would urge the planning board to, to discuss it. And, you know, if, if you want me to do something, maybe make sure that, that the majority of the planning board is on board before I run off and start drafting something. I'm not positive everybody's gonna, gonna want.
Absolutely, absolutely. I get that.
I mean, we haven't, that's one of the challenges, Jeff, is that we haven't actually had, we keep getting drafts, but we haven't actually had a discussion as a board.
Jeff, I think the advantage of the proposal that Marie has is that the town is concerned about, about affordable housing, like every other town. But here it's really a problem. And I think that if we can find housing alternatives for people who want a smaller unit or want to downsize, that would then put those homes that they're leaving on the market. And I know there was an older house, it was built in 1840, that sold recently for under $400,000. And it was according to the real estate listing, a really big house. I'm sure it needs some updates. But that makes a house affordable to somebody that's making maybe 75 or $100,000. And so it's not out of the reach of a lot of the people that I think we want to see living in our community.
One thing that I did mention to Christine, it may not be just what you're looking for, but I did this for another town last week and we're working on a similar bylaw to you. And the planning board felt there would be a great use for homes that weren't four bedrooms or more, great big McMansion style homes. And, and how, how could we encourage, how could we encourage the construction of more modest homes that people, that would be smaller, that people could, could move into, out of larger homes in that town? How could we encourage that? So what I did was I took the density divisor, which, you know, gets divided into the buildable land. And then that kicks out the number of, of units. And then I established that each unit produced was worth four bedrooms. Cause that's about what a, what a full-size, uh, single family dwelling is today, four bedrooms. That's what we designed for with Title V. So you multiply number of units times four bedrooms and you get this number of bedrooms. And then you say, well, okay, you can take those bedrooms and divide them up in other ways. So instead of say having one four-bedroom, single-family, large house, maybe it, it makes more sense to build two, two-bedroom homes. And perhaps the, the the profits in building two, two-bedroom homes, nice homes, but with only two bedrooms, might exceed that single family dwelling. You know, you have to have a reason for them to do it because they're not going to do it out of charity. But that's what they wanted. They wanted more smaller homes with fewer bedrooms, more affordable for, for their, for options for their current residence. So that's the way we kind of approached it there. Not positive that that's the way the bylaw is going to end up, but that's the way I drafted it for them.
But Jeff. What about market rate apartments?
Sure. Sure.
I think that is actually something that there is a need for in this area potentially.
Yeah.
But we don't really know.
So, so a, a multi-family, I, I guess by virtue of anything over a single family, I guess would be an apartment, wouldn't it? You know, there'd be two apartments in it. Yeah, it could certainly be, it could certainly be that. We have zoning in Chutesbury for up to four, four units per, per structure and those would be apartments.
How does it work?
We've only had duplexes under it. We haven't done anything more. Haven't done a three or a four yet.
And how's it worked out?
It's worked out okay. It's worked out okay. We haven't had any of these built in NRZs yet though. Those are all single family dwellings so far.
On, on single family dwellings, Jeff, in your reference to people maybe wanting a two-bedroom rather than a four-bedroom, is that something a planning board by zoning can mandate? Isn't the developer going to say that he wants? He wants four-bedroom houses or he wants two-bedroom houses or maybe he wants some of both? How are, how are we in a position to mandate one versus the other?
You're known. The, the board of health, the board of health, they're the bedroom, they're the people that get into your bedrooms and want to know what's going on in your bedrooms. And, and, and that, they regulate that. And under Title V, you, you need 10,000 square feet per bedroom. So if you don't have them, you can't have the bedroom. So if you have a 30,000 square foot lot, you can only get three bedrooms. The board of health will, will cut you off. Then in the sewered area, if you have capacity, you, you can probably, you know, if, if the town has capacity, you can probably hook up as many bedrooms as you want. But the, the idea of, of just dividing out developability according to not how many units, but how many bedrooms you're going to get based on everything being single family, multiplied by four, that tells you all the bedrooms. And then letting the developer divide those bedrooms up in, 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 in economically viable ways for them while providing some diversity in housing. Because the bottom line here is that if you, if you don't have to have four bedrooms for every unit and you can, you can put some here and put some there, you're going to have more houses overall. You're going to have more individual sales of houses. And, and that might work out good on your performance. So that's what my other town is, is, is looking at, is doing something like that. Or, or you could just, you could just approach it. You know, you, you could open it up. I mean, right now, apparently you can get a special permit for a duplex in, in, in Stockbridge. But why, why would anybody want to do that when they can? Why would anybody want to do that if a duplex is going to essentially amount to two single family dwellings? You're going to make more off those two single family dwellings than you're ever going to make off that duplex. So there'd be no reason for them to do it.
Yeah.
You have to, you have to sweeten it up.
There's, there's a question, shifting gears slightly. In your draft bylaw, Jeff, our draft bylaw, in section 6.24.1C, the question is, what is meant by residential units or other uses? This is the purposes and applicability. And subsection C is non-subdivision applications. And it reads in part, "In such a case, the application shall be subject to special permit review" as described in section 6.3, "under which the planning board may additionally consider the conservation benefits versus detriments of permitting a number of residential units or other uses in excess of the base number otherwise possible without the benefit of this section." The question is, what, what might other uses be?
Oh. The, the principal way NRZ is, is, is designed to regulate is subdivisions, which the only use is residential. But there are, there are possibilities where if they commit, commit under a special permit, they could include other types of, of, of uses in there other than residential. Like say a health club onsite or some type of community house. Or some type of agricultural, communal agricultural operation with farm stand or any other thing that, that that they may want to put in there.
Well, I guess, so when you're talking about uses, that sounds, you know, a health club. So, you know, could it be a bar or a dry cleaner or, you know, as Marie mentioned, she liked the idea, I think of beauty salons?
It, it would be, it would be something else that's available by special permit in Stockbridge already in the district. That would be associated with the residences.
So what do you mean? What do you mean by associated with the residences? I guess I'm not understanding what the limit of these uses would be. What's the scope? I need to, that's what I need to understand better.
It, it, it would be some other project that perhaps would go with, with one of the residences. It could, it could be common to all the residences. You know, like, like some type of, of pool or mini golf course or CSA farm or maybe even an auto repair shop for one of the residences associated with it that would come in under the same permit. And it would all be stuff that you could apply for anyway in Stockbridge with a special permit in that district. So in addition to the NHRPZ layout and methodology, you're also proposing something else. Another legal use that comes under a special permit. And, and, and that would all be included in that special permit.
So when you say another legal use, something that is currently allowed in our table of uses?
Yes. It, it wouldn't be some use that's not.
So I don't think, I heard you say auto repair shop or mechanic shop.
Well, it, it, it could be some type of, of home occupation, rural towns, many residences. Many residents make their living out of their homes or their farms with home occupations of all sorts. And some of those require a special permit. So if part of this project was adding home occupations, then that, that's, that's how you do it in a consolidated special permit.
So what about a conference center?
Depends if it's allowed. I mean, they, just remember, if it's allowed, they can propose it anyway. Here, if they, if they hook their buggy up to an NHRPZ for their conference center, they're, they're going to be dedicating 80% open space as a part of that deal. Whereas if they propose it independently, they probably don't have any open space requirements that go through the project. Like the Sisto, I didn't see any, I didn't see any preserved open space out there. I just saw unused land. You do, you tried to do something like this with, you tried to do the Sisto on, under this, this regime, it comes automatically with 80% open space. 80 or 60, I think that partial is divided. But there's no, there's no advantage. I mean, it, it's just something that you could, that you could come in for a special permit anyway. Without, without the NHRPZ, without the housing, just freestanding whatever and propose it. But if you wish to try to integrate it with this project, then you, you would, you would be allowed to do that. It would be a little bit of a mixed use. But you'd have to get that special permit.
And, and the planning board would have discretion in granting such a permit?
Yeah, planning board could, could approve most of it and throw out the special permit if it, if it didn't sound reasonable.
Cause I, I'm thinking without prejudice at anybody's business plan, that in most of the residential areas of Stockbridge, the idea of an auto repair shop is terrifying to me. I mean, just, just an impossibility. I've never seen an auto repair shop that looks anything other than a dog's breakfast. It's just a mess. And we wouldn't want one in, in the residential parts of town. Now, a farm stand, community pool, you know, some of those other uses you mentioned, Jeff, those seem much more benign, but I'll tell you, auto repair, forget about it.
It, it, it's all indexed to what you've already determined is an acceptable special permit used to apply for in the district.
Yeah.
It doesn't add any, anything, only that, that, that you could co-mingle it with this permit. So you had a more. that, that you could co-mingle it with this permit. So you had a more unified project if you knew all the uses that.
I think we need to take a closer look at that, Jeff, and I'd like to, um, once I look at that, send you, send you a list of my, with my understanding of, of what's allowed and, and if you can take a look at that, that would be helpful.
Does anybody know?
There's a list of what's allowed.
Where is that, Wayne?
It's on the table of uses.
Right.
Where is that?
It's in the zoning by law.
I know, but you know exactly where? I couldn't find it.
It starts on page thirty-one with principal uses and then it goes on to accessory uses. And that's quite, it's three pages maybe of accessory uses.
It's a table.
And Jeff, I think that, um, the special permit process would be the same that we go through now in this special permit body that would be granting those permits would be the same as we have under our existing zoning. Am I correct?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just, I, I went back to the bylaws. I'm reading this particular part again, just, just so I can.
Can everyone see that?
Yes, thank you.
I, I'm going to take it down now if it's okay. I just wanted to show you where it is.
And special permit planning is P and there's special select, special permit select board when you're looking at this list.
P is planning board and, and S is select board and, um, there's another one for zoning board of appeals, I think. Yes. Okay. Well, I feel, I need to take a closer look at that and better, better understand that part.
Yeah, it's a, it's a long list. We should, we should review.
There's nothing on the list. If there's something that's missing, it's automatically not allowed. So anything you can think of that's not on the list is automatically considered not allowed on, on that, uh, kind of things.
That's right. No airports.
Or junkyards, racetracks, drive-in theaters.
So we have it covered. Anything is going to be covered and it's all going to come under a special permit.
Yeah, okay. Maybe we shouldn't be so worried, but it, it is worth a, a further.
I think it's important to review and, and, yeah, because this is a, well, this is an important point.
Yeah. Okay, Christine, did you have a point or question?
Um, I just, I, when you were talking earlier, Jeff, and I think it might have been a little confusing it, because we have talked about the existing zoning remaining. And so if a property is in the R four district, under this bylaw, the way I understand it, you're still going to need that square footage to have an opportunity for the density that we are looking at for the base density. Is that correct?
No, I did not understand that, Christine.
Your question at all.
If, if you're, I'm just asking about the density. If you're in forty thousand square foot zoning district and, um, and you are going to deal with the density of the units allowed, you're still going to need to respect that forty thousand square feet per unit. Is that correct as the base density?
Well, let's see, your R two is, is R two acres, right?
Yeah. Right. I was just using forty because that was just an easy number to work with, but no, it would have to be a two, two acres or four acres is the most common type.
No, um, no, um, the, the, the two acres and the four acres um, don't apply anymore. Um, and the lot sizes you're going to, you're going to get are in the neighborhood of, um, you know, the average lot sizes, about one point two, uh, in the, in the, um, R four and one point five in the R two, I believe I calculated.
So that would be plus the, oh, all of the land that is permanently protected in open space.
Right, right. Right. So the, so, so, yeah, you're, 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 you're not going to have any more requirements for, for two acre lots and four acre lots. And, and the way it works out in the formulas and with the amount of open space that's required, um, in the, in the R four, there'll be eighty percent open space that's, um, um, that's preserved and, um, lots that are about one point two acres in size, more than adequate for a four bedroom house. Um, and then in the R two, where you only get sixty percent open space preserved, there's more land for the house lot. So those house lots are going to be going up in size, uh, to about, um, one point five acres each on average.
For, for how many bedrooms is that?
Uh, the one point five acres is, um, is about, uh, oh my, that's a lot of, that's a lot of bedrooms. Um, that's about six.
Oh.
Yeah, ten thousand, a rule of thumb, well, and septic on the same piece of land, then you need ten thousand square feet per bedroom. So, yeah. So probably four or five bedrooms in the R four and maybe up to six in the, um, in the R two.
Plus all the open space, which would be substantial.
Right. Right.
Marie, did you have a question? No, okay. Other questions from the planning board members?
I had one that I submitted. I don't know if it got filtered down, but I had a concern about six point two, four point two C. It says afterwards, the planning board in consultation with the conservation commission, select board historic district commission, if applicable, and historic commissions shall study the conservation analysis, shall conduct field visits and shall formally determine which land should be preserved and where development may be located. I'm concerned that this is, there's too many fingers in the pie here. And it's just going to like make things take forever to come to a consensus where we all agree.
Planning board does have final say.
Okay.
Yeah, planning board in consultation with, so yes, consultation, field visits, but in the end it's down to you guys.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure on.
Yep. And, and, and those are the groups that I was advised would be interested in doing these kinds of reviews.
Right. I just didn't want it to be where we all had to agree on, because we would never all agree.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the point is, there may be input from one or more of these bodies that the planning board would want to take into account.
Sure.
Even if in the end, the planning board decides, uh, to go its own way and, uh, and not take it into account, but at least there's been an opportunity for, um, these organizations, if they choose to, to, uh, to participate in this, um, determination.
That's fair, yeah.
Related to that, then, the conservation commission gives orders of condition presently on developments. How would that be incorporated? How would their work be incorporated into what we are doing?
Uh, well, a, a project like this would be subject to those orders of conditions and the whatever proposals they're, they're doing, they have to work around them. Generally, um, smart developers, um, get involved with the CONCOM early on and through this ANRAN process, abbreviated notice of resource area delineation. They, they all agree on, on where the lines are for the wetlands upfront. And, uh, that will often happen in the beginning before the, the, the design really starts because number one, in order to do your formulas, you need to know how, how, you know, where the wetlands are and, and how great an area they occupy. Cause that is one of the variables that goes into the formula. And, um, that's all also going to tell you what areas of the parcel are accessible, what you can get to without going through too many wetlands. So most likely they're going to be working with the CONCOM, um, maybe even before you.
So you mentioned Jeff, um, an accredited wetland scientist?
Yeah.
Who pays for that?
That, um, is, uh, that's done by the CONCOM and, uh, there is a provision in state law called, uh, chapter forty-four, fifty-three G, section fifty-three G, and that allows, um, a board like the CONCOM to, um, hire consultants to help them evaluate developer proposals at the developer's cost. So CONCOM picks a consultant, developer pays the cost of that consultant to review their project.
Okay, thank you.
And I, you, you might want to take a look at your bylaws and, and see if you've accepted forty-four, fifty-three G, which, uh, I think you have to have something in there. Okay, we used it in the herbicide debate.
So yeah. Accepted it for subdivisions, but it's not in our general by law.
Most conservation commissions, um, use it. Our certainly does.
I look at this with, uh, in the same area that Nancy was looking at, six point two, four point two, the conservation analysis and findings. See, at this point in the proceedings, we've asked the applicant to set aside eighty percent of their property. They must provide a conservation analysis identifying sensitive areas, the unbuildable areas. And that's not included in the eighty percent. With what's left, the planning board still has say over where those buildings will be located. Can you imagine this board going to a property and agreeing where those buildings are going to be located? Marie loves trees and doesn't like to see them cut. I have an affinity for fields. I'd like to see the houses tucked back in the woods where the trees will be cut. We can't even agree on whether to allow two more square feet on a sign in what part of the town. I can't imagine this being workable. I can't. And in addition to that, you take ten percent more for the roads and utilities. You know, it goes on and on. In six point two, point four, point six, arrangement of developable areas. After all those prior requirements, you have to cite the buildings in a manner that quote protects views from the roads, other publicly accessible points, neighboring developed land, historic structures and features, farmland, wildlife habitat, large harvestable forest, hilltops, ponds, steep slopes and other sensitive resources. Holy mackerel. I mean, where is someone supposed to put a house?
It's not, it's not a bylaw that a guy who does paving might love, maybe.
I know, not a guy that does paving. I can't imagine anybody being this restricted on property that they own. It's, I, I find it horrendously overburdening to an applicant.
So, so Jeff, to, um, Wayne's point, how, how have other towns that you've worked with who have passed bylaws like this overcome that, uh, understandable concern that, uh, this may be, you know, too complicated, too, too, uh, controversial, too, too many conditions to make it workable. How, how's that work?
First of all, I, Wayne made a lot of points and, and I lost track of some of them, but, um, upfront, he seemed to say that the, none of the constrained lands could go in the, the open space. But that's not so. The, the constrained lands probably should go in the open space because they're wet, they have streams, um, they have steep slopes, they're, um, biocore habitat, there, there are other types of, of, of lands that merit, um, merit protection. And, and they should go in the open space. Uh, I took, a lot of this is very similar to what you have in your, in your cluster by law now. These types of subtractions, um, you have a similar list in your by law now. Um, in fact, the, the deduction for, uh, roads and streets and utilities, I took from your by law because you already have it. And I think I reduced it from fifteen percent to ten percent. But I'm only taking that out of the, uh, developable area. I'm not taking that out of the whole parcel, because if you, you know, say, uh, again, back to the Sisto, three hundred and twenty acres. There's not going to be roads and streets running all over that property. So why take out an amount of, of land that would, that would do that? You know, take ten percent of, uh, three hundred and twenty, that's thirty-two acres you'd be subtracting. It, it's more like you're taking, um, you're taking ten percent of, um, seventy-six acres or so that's developable. So that was a bit of a, that was a bit of a refinement to make it more, um, make it more reasonable. But, but Wayne, these things are all trade-offs, um, you know, it, and it depends on what you have there at, at, at the site. If, if you have incredibly valuable historic resources that you're working around, maybe those merit more protection than some of the natural areas. Or if you have a tremendous piece of farmland, you know, with some good arable soil, um, and some vistas across, um, maybe that's the most important thing to, to protect in that particular instance. And, and you put the houses in the woods, um, it, it just depends on, on what you get when you get there.
But we keep going back to the Sisto and this is another concern that if this is what leads to the Sisto and we set a precedent with these numbers and preservation, uh, uh, numbers. I don't want this to be then, well, you just did this open space by law. How could, uh, in a cottage era estate by law, you're contradicting yourself if you want more density there so that the place can survive. If we're going to look back and say, well, you just did this, how can you now say you want more density in a cottage estate by law? That's why I wanted them separate, but if this is now a precursor to what'll be looked at to do in, in the cottage estate, then I have a hard time with that.
Okay, we, we did take the, the cottage era estate off.
I know, but we keep talking about it.
Okay, um,
Let's, let's.
I, 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 I did leave, I, I did leave a spot at the end of this. Um, I, I've taken it out now, but if you wish to link cottage era estate, if you, you all achieve some consensus about where you're going with that, you could put it on the end of this as item H and just add four or five more pages to this for, for cottage era. And thereby have the cottage era development uh, come in under this NHRPZ, which would, which would give you the, the open space, um, protection. And it would also give you the, the, the conservation analysis and findings process. Um, it would add that to the C E E stuff.
And it gives the place no chance to survive with the numbers that you proposed earlier. I mean, it was down to thirty-four units and that didn't include a hotel. That didn't include any of the other. And that didn't include a hotel. That didn't include any of the other stuff that was with it. I think it's way too restrictive.
Okay, if you wished, in the CEE section, you could always bump those numbers up for a legitimate CEE project. As it stands, this is just for residential subdivision. This is just for going out and 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 building roads and houses. If it was a CEE and you folks really wanted to to put in some economic incentives to make it go, you can bump up the number of of residential units if it's that type of project. You would be able to do that.
And and Jeff, in a separate CEE bylaw, you could incorporate elements in it from the NHRPZ that are relevant, just by reference. In other words, rather than, you know, rehashing three pages of identical lang- or nearly identical language from from that from the bylaw we're working on now, you could incorporate elements of it by reference, couldn't you?
Yes. Yeah, it it's just a matter of getting all the citations right.
Yeah.
I have a, I'm sorry, Bill, are you done? Are you finished?
I was just gonna say, I I don't think that's that's gonna satisfy Wayne, but but I I tend to agree that as we discussed a few weeks ago, we we do the cottage era state work separately and later. And this is a perhaps a prime reason for doing so.
So Jeff, my question for you is that at the last meeting, Wayne was asking about density neutral versus density negative. And you responded that you had a bad batting average of a thousand with density negative and you stressed reasons why to go, why we should go with density negative. But in I in looking at this, the wording in this bylaw, it looks to me like it's open ended such that density provisions can be waived. So if that's the case, it seems like this bylaw could be interpreted such that it it has nothing to do with density negative or density neutral for that matter. So at that point, how is resource protection zoning maintained and and what does this have to do with with con- conservation?
Okay, the there's a universal waiver in here. And and it's it's partially to ensure against takings so that you have some flexibility. So you're not backed into a corner and 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 sued for a taking. You can use a waiver to protect yourself against that type of situation. You can also recognize a a really good design you'd never thought of that that has a great deal of appeal, but in order to make it go financially, they may need a little something that you don't provide. So you're able to help them out with a with a waiver to get a project that you all recognize as being beneficial.
Okay, but that seems very subjective to me. So if you have a board that is, you know, is is very pro development, is is it possible that this is no longer that at some point, this is not a conservation bylaw?
The waiver is by special permit. It's 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 not a a waiver that you can do any other way. And the special permit involves notice to a butters and it can be appealed.
Right, but if you have, you know, if you have a board, if you have a board that typically never turns down a special permit, you know, and my understanding is that under the Baker legislation, a butter standing is much more difficult to get now. So how does that factor in?
I I don't know if they changed what an a butter is or or much of this special permit process. They might have, they might have made it a little bit more difficult to to file an appeal. You you might have to post a bond or I think you have to post a bond or something perhaps. But you don't have to grant the waiver, the the reason may be no good. But you know, ultimately, you're the planning board, you're you make discretionary decisions on on special permits. You have to use your judgment, apply them to the facts and use your judgment and trust that the folks at Stockbridge, through who they elect, are going to have good people doing this work.
I mean, does it, you know, in a town, you must realize that, you know, approximately half the town is is some part time residents, so they don't vote. So do you, you know, so they don't essentially, they don't really have representation on some of these things. So do you see that as a complicating factor?
No, no, I mean, we have a lake here in Chutesbury that most of the people are not permanent residents, and yet we have them all zoned up down there and we that that's the way the the cookie crumbles. Some towns have amenities and draws that like you and us to some extent that bring in seasonal people.
It can also voice their their opinions at a public hearing on these proposals that would fall under the special permit, correct?
Geez, I don't know. Perhaps, maybe not on the same level as a as a resident.
A town meeting, they have to sit in a separate location and the moderator can determine whether or not they can speak. But at our special permit hearings, I don't think we know who is a resident and who is not a resident. We just allow people who have an interest to come forward and express their opinions pro or con. And those go into the decision making process. And I think the other issue is that to label a board as pro or negative development could be very detrimental because I think for this board that's presently in place, it has worked really hard to look at both sides of the issue and come to a balance. And we've had training that helps us do that. So I would hope that would continue and the voters would understand that we are a balanced board. And I can't imagine that they would ever just elect a whole pro development slate because the positions are for five years. And so the board stays pretty stable.
Can we come back to this waiver question? I don't fully understand it.
I I I have to make it brief because my own planning board has already begun and I'm supposed to be there at seven.
Oh, okay.
I I advise you to an hour for for this.
Question in chat, Jeff, that I think is is a good question and it's Patrick is asking, is there a way to add some guardrails to a waiver? Like no more than ten percent increase in density. The current cluster subsection requires developers to stay within the underlying zoning.
Okay. Somebody make a motion, somebody second it, discuss it and vote it and I'll write it. Just I I I have to go, but if I I I'll do anything like that for you. I think that's very reasonable, putting brackets on on any density changes by waiver. That's fine. That's a good idea.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got to go to our own our own dramas here in Chutesbury.
Have fun.
Take care.
Thanks, Jeff.
Bye bye.
Hi, Jeff.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just sneezed.
Did we answer Wayne's question, his concerns about all those points that he was trying to make about, you know, developed lands, historic structures, farmland, habitat, harvestable forest areas, ponds, stream? Did we answer that?
I'm just concerned about at what point the property owner gets to make a choice on where he wants his buildings to be put. It seems like we are the ones telling him where to put things and I I don't agree with that.
Excuse me.
I think, Wayne, if you look at the citing principles, there are a lot of guidelines in those for where the buildings are going to be put on the site. And they're pretty much what I think both parties, the planning board and the person who is developing the property would agree with because they're looking at beards and all of those kinds of issues as being areas that either are protected or not. And I think that so the whole idea is to negotiate with the developer and come up with the ideas as to where it makes sense. And in the projects that I'm been aware of, there's usually, it's pretty obvious where it makes sense to have some housing and how where to take advantage, for instance, of the solar opportunities of a site. And those all go into play in helping to design the site. So I think that the developer would probably agree with most of the sightings that the planning board is going to want. Because we both want development that if it goes forward is going to be attractive to the town and maintain the town values. That's the whole purpose of this bylaw.
Well, my point is that we can't even, we can't disagree on anything on this board. I mean, it it just on the smallest of items. And now we're going to go out on on twenty acres of land and decide where these buildings are going to go.
But to be to be fair, Wayne, I'm just looking at section six point two four point two B and C. It's the applicant's option or really opportunity. He's last sentence of six point two four point two B is strongly encouraged to file at least a preliminary conservation analysis at the preliminary plan stage of the application. So we're not sitting there and saying, applicant, you will do this. We're reacting to what the applicant has asked for.
Well, the applicant is only supplied what areas are restricted through that analysis. That's wetlands, that's deep slopes, that's the unbuildable. I mean, yes, that has to come first and it should. But after that, he doesn't have, he doesn't have say. We do.
But we have say on the basis of what the applicant, I mean, we we can't just doesn't seem to me that this language suggests that the planning board has absolute and final and you know, complete discretion to say, this is where you're going to build these houses and nowhere else.
I think we do.
We want the applicant.
Through this language, I think we do.
I think the applicant has the opportunity to say, here's where I'd like to build the houses in light of this zoning bylaw. We take that into account. We consult with these other bodies in in subsection C, those that want to be consulted with. And and we we then determine based on the applicant, the application from the applicant, which land should be preserved and where development can be located. It doesn't seem quite so unilateral as you're as you're making it out to be.
I think we have to have a pretty good reason to say they can't build where they want to. Doesn't no, we have to do it in writing and and all of that. We can't just say, oh, no, we don't like it there. We need it here. I think we have to have a good reason to not put where a developer might want it. Am I wrong there? I mean, I thought they'd come to us and they say, we'd like to put our houses here and if we have no objection to it.
I mean, this is a conservation bylaw in many ways and I guess I I believe that our obligation is to the town primarily, number one.
The town is people.
And the town is people. Our obligation is not to. I mean, of course, yes, we, you know, we're looking at something that will be feasible for a developer, but not at the expense of the town. And so I think that it's reasonable that the Conservation Commission and Conservation Biologists that these things need to be considered. I mean, we're living in a time of climate change. Let's think about the next generation here.
Well, I am. And I'm thinking also the property owner too, by the way, which I think gets left out of this in in many ways. And when I don't mind seeing the house built in the woods, but somebody else likes the knoll with a stand of birches. I just don't see it being workable. And after we've put aside eighty percent of somebody's land and then the remainder of these restrictions are also what we are going to say to these folks that, oh, by the way, you can't build on that knoll. That should be preserved. It has a nice view. I I just find it way too restrictive.
But you know.
I I think that the Conservation Commission needs to have a, I think their role is important. I mean, it's their it's their business to to understand these issues. And I think, you know, it's it's important to to listen to them on these on some of these these situations as well as the input from experts. And it seems that 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 at least is provided for.
So the question I had, and I'm sure I submitted it too late unless I missed it in the first few minutes, was I asked him to do a density neutral illustration as he had with the other examples. And did he do that?
Not in this meeting.
Okay. I would like to see that. And I'd like to know what the numbers are that are associated with that scenario.
I would agree with Patrick's comment and I'd like to read it out loud. He says, one way to deal with this is to increase the minimum lot size that is applicable. It would be a lot easier to find a good spot to build on eighty acres than on twenty acres.
In some, in many cases, perhaps not all, but I I take the point.
But if we only do eighty acres and above, there's the whole purpose of this bylaw is to save natural resources throughout the community. There are very few eighty acre sites in town. That brings us back to the CEE bylaw that had the problems. So that's why we are looking at smaller acreage because the same opportunities apply to protect the town character rather than having sites being built four acre house sites and one house that ends up being on six or ten acres, which really Audubon, for instance, Mass Audubon says is a disaster for our future because of the sprawl that that kind of development creates. So that's the reason why I think we have looked at smaller lot areas because of the concern about the future of what the town is going to look like.
I guess I would suggest starting slow on this whole thing. There are enough questions. The question is to whether it will even pass and I think you'd have a better have be able to in a be in a position to get a a better feel for it if you if you started off slow by applying it to to a larger acreage. I don't, you know.
I don't think we're going to solve this tonight.
I agree on that.
I know we've lost Jeff. Is there with respect to his elements of his bylaw, his draft, are there other questions from the board or or comments that anyone wants to make that either we need to, we, somebody thinks we need to spend more time on either we need to, somebody thinks we need to spend more time on or are parts that are confusing or? Anybody? Sorry, I'm just looking in the. Okay.
Are we going to have another talk with Jeff about this before it goes for the public? To look at it?
We have the public meeting scheduled on the 12th.
The 12th, okay.
And I don't think we have to have a final document. I think it would just be nice to hear where the concerns are and where the information has become confused and be able to try to sort through some of those things. So hopefully we can move forward cohesively.
And, and with, with hopefully a broad, broad contributions from more than, you know, three or four members of the public who've been tuning into these meetings. I appreciate that those of you who have been regulars have been pretty faithful, but we need a, a bigger cross section of the community and hope, hopefully that's what we'll get on the 12th.
We need to figure out how we can do that. I think we need to have all parties concerned, you know, I mean, well, how we can, I don't know how we can make everybody in town aware that this is happening and how important it is.
Well, we did it with respect to Randall Aaron's Zoom back in November, I think it was. We had a little more advanced notice. I mean, May 12th is two, two and a bit weeks away. So we don't have a lot of time. But we somehow pulled it off with Randall. I think, I forgot the number, but I think we were, there were 70 or 80 people on that.
91 were on the call.
They, there weren't 91 at the end, but there were 91 at the beginning and it would be nice to have that kind of number again.
How did we get so many? How, how did that, how did we put that out?
We, we really, I think as planning board members, we alerted people to.
There was a, you wrote something in the ego, right? Or in the paper?
Yes, I did. Yes. And that helped. I think that if we as planning board members share the, you know, information with our friends and family, that certainly would help expand the number of people who are aware of it. And so we need to get that information up on the town website. I'm, I'm think that Jennifer has posted the meeting, but we had more of a description of Randall's presentation on the first page of the website and that also helped to bring people to hear him. There's, there was a lot of interest certainly in that. And I think that there could be a lot of interest in this if we can get the information out. And I think it would help formulate what we do going, or what you do going forward, because at this point we've raised issues, but it would be nice to hear how other people in the town are viewing this and what their concerns are.
The draft needs to be posted on the town website, Bill.
Yes. And, and I think Christine's right. We're not going to have a finished product for the town, nor should we frankly. I think the fact that we've got some open items, we should be candid and say, this is something, these are issues that the planning board is grappling with. We have not yet come to a, a conclusion on these three or five or 10 or four items that remain unresolved and we want to hear from the town on, on exactly those issues and any others that we may think are pretty settled among ourselves, but maybe not are completely, you know, satisfactory to people in the town.
We're not allowed to use the robo-call, are we, for this? Seems like we tried that last time, you know?
I don't think so. I think that's emergencies and we.
I think we tried that last time, but.
Yeah.
Yes. Roxanne said, no.
Yeah.
But maybe we can post something in the post office too. And that would certainly get people, you know, with, I think a lot of people stand there and sort their mail and look at the bulletin board while they're doing it. So that might be a good location for an announcement.
Yeah. But I think, I do think posting it with an explanation and some background on the website, the town's website is a, is essential.
Selectment announced it in there. Can the selectmen announce it at their meeting, you know?
I would think so. I would think so if we ask them.
Thank you. Thanks, Patrick.
We move on.
If there are no other questions, I did see Mark Mills had raised his hand. Mark, what, what's on your mind?
Thanks, Phil. I was just curious about compliance with this. I'm looking at on the first page of the 6241B applicability. And it says it refers to any project of 20 acres or greater. And I just wondered if people, if somebody had 35 acres and they wanted to sell it off in two parcels, both of which were under 20 as a way to evade having to comply with this and, and be able to develop two projects and do it just any way they want within whatever right they have now. I didn't know if that's something that's ever come up or something that Jeff had any experience with, but it, it seems like a bit of a loophole that I don't know how to address that, but it seems like it could be something that would be a temptation for people.
Yeah. Gaming the system, in other words, I, I'm not quite sure how how we could prevent that.
So Mark, you think that somebody could potentially have a 50 acre site and separate and do a A and R to make two 25 acres more or less sites and then or I guess, okay, in your example, if that would mean that they would not meet the 40 acre requirement. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, they could just divide their, their total parcels into something that falls outside of the 20 acre requirement here. So if they had 50 acres, they could do, you know, two 18s and a 14 or something. I don't know. Just something that struck me that people would possibly want to do to avoid having to comply with this. I, it's just, you know, something occurred to me, but it may, may not be a way to get around it because you have to settle a size limit somewhere and wherever it is, people will possibly game it.
The one thing that happens right now is if you have the adequate frontage, you don't need to go through the subdivision process. So if these three lots had the frontage that they could be separated, we cannot do anything to stop that. As long as they're on a main road and that A and R provision is really very generous to people who want to develop because they, they can come in and there's not even a notice to the abutters and the planning board has to act very quickly or else it's a constructive approval. They've been trying for years to change that provision in the state law. We're the only state in the country with it, but they have not been successful. And so what you're suggesting can happen now and then they could split the, the parcels again through a subdivision process if they wanted to, to deal with these underlying zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Looking at the agenda and I'm mindful of the time. It is 7:25. We, by the way, just a housekeeping matter, there will be no meeting on, on the second, I mean, the third Tuesday of May because that's election day. And we don't meet on election day. I guess that's a law. I, I thought it was a custom, but apparently it's a, it's a state law.
Can we switch the order of the agenda so that, and just go to the short term rental thing so that?
Can you, can you let me finish, please?
Sure.
There won't be a meeting on the 18th. The, the next meeting after the 18th will be June 1st. And I think, and, and we've got the meeting next week. The select board needs a decision by us or a recommendation by us to them for inclusion in the annual town meeting of a of our thinking about what the consultants would be doing during the next fiscal year. We've, we've submitted a request for a $40,000 funding, 15,000 to complete Jeff Lacy's work, 25,000 to renew Phil Arnold's work from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. And the select board has said, can you give us a little detail on what these consultants would be doing for this money? I think we need to have that list ready for next Tuesday at the latest because it won't be, there won't be enough time unless we hold another special meeting to get it in and get the select board to bless it and put it on the, on the town warrant. I think it's vital that we get this funding. I think the idea that we would work without Phil Arnold next year is not something I want to contemplate. And I want to make sure that what we get from Jeff is complete, which may, may take us into the next fiscal year. So I think we've got a case to be made, but it needs to be made with a little more detail than I've been able to make it to date. We've got a list and I'd like to share it with the planning board.
So, you know, before you start sharing a list, can you discuss with a budget of what has been spent to date?
Kate, can you hang on a minute, please? Hold your horses. I'll get to you. We have, I think we have the responsibility of producing a list for the planning, for the select board so that we have the funding we need. It, it's my understanding in answer your question about budgets or spent already that we're close to having spent all the money allocated for Jeff Lacy.
And that was how much?
I don't have the exact dollar amount. It was $15,000.
So we're close to having spent $15,000 for Jeff Lacy?
Close. I, I can't tell you exactly how close unless Christine, do you have an exact number?
There was $3,500, I believe, for Randall Aaron for the presentation on open space design zoning. And then we hired Jeff and he, I think is 8,500 and Randall is 3,000. I'm not exactly for sure how those two broke down. Randall has been working with Jeff on these provisions. He just worked with him on the siting principles. They have spent a lot of time working together.
I just need the numbers, please.
Pardon?
I just need the numbers.
So Jeff will, before the time period is up, will have used the Jeff and Randall, that combination will have pretty much expended the entire 15,000. Berkshire Regional Bill has to get that figure. I can't. So I don't know where Bill is on that. But that was considerably less than what we had budgeted. And so there's a question as to how that is going to be able to be rolled over if it will go back to the select board to be applied to another allocation for us or exactly how that is going to work out.
Well, Bill, I guess I would suggest if you could have that figure and send it out before the meeting next week. And my suggestion would be that whatever is left over with regional planning and Phil Arnold, that that be rolled over to the next fiscal year and deducted from the total amount that you were planning on asking for.
If that's even possible.
That, if that's the question, Kate, we don't know.
You just ask for less is, you know.
If, if, if we can't roll it over, we would. And, and yeah, I think the effect would be to, if, if there's $5,000 left, the request for next year might be 20,000 in addition to the five that could be rolled over. We're not sure that the five or whatever that figure is can in fact be rolled over from fiscal year to fiscal year. Right? It's a question for Mike Canelas.
I just, do we need a new appropriation for the total amount? And then there's a deduction. So at this point, rather than getting into how all of that bookkeeping is going to move forward, I think that's where the 40,000 came from. It's just, this is what we're going to, to need. And let's, we'll have to figure out exactly how that second component is going to be addressed.
So I'm just going to voice a different, a different perspective here, Bill. I'm not convinced that we do need it. My concern is that the planning board has sort of become a sandbox for, for people to just play in with our bylaws. And, you know, we, we spent all this time on parking sign and driveway this year. In the meantime, it took the select board to address short-term rentals, which in my mind should have been a top priority. So, so that's my concern. No, I, I'm not, I, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I feel we should, I feel, I feel we should reconsider this appropriation for next year, working with Phil Arnold. It's, it's been difficult. The administrative part has been difficult. You know, I, I feel we should have worked through Christine, through, through Jennifer instead of having Christine be the sole person that communicated between planning board members and Phil. I mean, my gosh, it took me something like four or five requests just to get him to date stamp his drafts. I mean, that's just standard administrative practice.
Can you imagine getting, can you imagine getting the driveway sign and parking bylaws through without him? I can't.
I'm, I'm not convinced that there was.
You think we're backed up now?
I'm not convinced that there was such a great need there in the first place. My concern is that we're, you know, we're, we're solving problems that don't necessarily exist. I mean, this whole business with the change of use downtown. You know, we were told there was an emergency downtown Yankee Candle. Oh, my goodness, somebody has bought it and they're going to move in and use it as a residence. How is that an emergency? I'm sorry, but that property was, that the front part of that building was empty for several years before the pandemic. So to me, if somebody was willing to buy that front part of that building, the original town hall, move into it and use it as a residence, not only is that what Joel Russell recommended in his diagnostic was having mixed use in the business district, but it seemed reasonable, having sat in empty all that time.
Mixed use in the business district does not mean taking an iconic structure on our main street and on Christmas weekend, having it as a residence, not in the least bit concerned about the Norman Rockwell feel and being able to do anything that they want in a residence. I think our business district is tiny compared to most towns that is an iconic building. I read Jeff, I read Joel Russell's to talk about mixed use as absolutely being mixed use on upper floors. But we need to, and I think it's up to the town residents to decide whether or not they want us to keep that iconic structures and the rest of Main Street as business use. We are bringing it to the town in, because we. We are bringing it to the town in, because we have a bylaw now that addresses the uses. And the town residents now have an opportunity to weigh in on this at town meeting. The same with the sign bylaw. You might not think it's necessary, but Lost Lamb was not able to put those signs over their entrance. And to a lot of people, that may be a good thing. Maybe they will be told they have to take it down. But it shouldn't be the planning board that's making that decision. It should be part of our bylaws that go to town meeting. The same with the parking. Everybody is non-conforming. That means that it's very difficult for a new business to start in downtown. And I'm delighted that we have Elm Street Market and they have great sandwiches. And I think they add a lot to our downtown. So, and it's, so these bylaws have taken a lot of work. They are not easy to develop because you have to develop them, not just us sitting down and writing something on a piece of paper, but by having somebody that understands the legal issues and that can work with the information from the AG's office and with the town attorney. And they have spent a lot of time on these bylaws. So I think for what we have done, and we are now working on the accessory dwelling unit, which was our priority before we addressed whether or not we were going to take on short-term rentals. We are now moving through that process and should have a bylaw done at some point that will address this need for affordable housing. And then there are, if you look at Joel's report, he identifies so many other issues that absolutely need to get addressed. He talks about downtown and modifying the dimensional requirements to fit the actual character of downtown. Revise, revise the definition of fast food. Allow more flexibility in the uses so that low-impact business can locate there. He recommends that we did work on the accessory dwelling unit and allow some small businesses to operate out of homes and outbuildings. These should be evaluated. And that can help with affordability. Allow two-family and low-impact housing types in addition to single-family housing types. And he goes on to talk about the effectiveness or not of the zoning around the bowl. He mentions that the town could investigate the putting in site plan review to oversee development that is conducted by not-for-profits. He says that sometimes and what the concern with the historic preservation bylaw is sometimes that it works in ways that are counterproductive, encouraging building owners to let buildings deteriorate. He talks about the non-conforming provisions of our bylaw, which we all are very well aware of. And.
Christine, if I, if I can, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's just that there's so much that.
And, and I take your point. There, there are issues. I, to me, having a professional planner help with these issues is something close to essential. And while I don't have, I mean, Christine just went through a list that's actually only partial. That's why I tried politely to cut her off because she could have gone on. I, I think it's important that we proceed with, uh, meeting with the Select Board next Tuesday. And as, as planned, as the Select Board has requested, to talk about this budget request and to detail how we, how we're going to spend it on both of these consultants, all three of these consultants. I'd like to make a motion that we, that we do so, that we meet with the Select Board on, in our next regular meeting, that we present them with a list of possible work for these consultants in the, in the coming fiscal year. I think not to go forward with this is is unthinkable, in my opinion. And so I, I've just made a motion that is, if that's clear, is there anyone wanting to second it?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
How are you going to communicate with board members on, on this list?
I think.
I'm going to ask that you have board members send their ideas to Jennifer. And that you then have Jennifer send out the final list of ideas.
Yeah, that'll work. We can do that.
Thank you.
Hey, what kind of ideas, just on this budgeting?
Ideas for these two, these three consultants, Randall, Jeff and Phil.
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded. Jennifer isn't here to call the roll, so I guess I will.
I'm sorry. Can you just read the, say the motion again, Bill?
It won't be the same as I just said, but I'll try to get as close as I can. I move that we agree to meet with the, the Select Board at our next regular scheduled meeting to present to them a list of proposed projects for the consultants that the planning board proposes to use next year in connection with the requested $40,000 budget. That's, that is proposed to be part of the town annual meeting. If that's clear. Is your second still good, Marie? So I'll call the roll. I vote yes. Marie?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Kate?
Abstain.
Vote no if you want. It doesn't count as a vote if you abstain.
No, I'll stick with abstain.
Okay. So it passes five to zero with one abstention. Just making a note.
The reason I abstain, Bill, was because I mean, I'm a little bit on the fence, but I'm grateful that this is being handled through Jennifer.
Okay.
I said, I think I sent you an email that, did you see the email I sent you last week to that point?
Yeah.
Did you have any thoughts on that?
No, let's all send our thoughts to Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay. What's next? We've got the short-term rentals thing. Did we get the material on that? I, I don't think I've seen it. Did anybody else see the, the section B of the?
I didn't get anything.
Short-term rentals by law. Patrick, if that was.
I saw.
Been a while.
What, what I saw is that they have amended our bylaw in the section that deals with uses. So that's 411. And Patrick probably has the language. And put in that short-term rentals are allowed in all districts in the town. And they have removed all of the other zoning provisions that they had originally drafted. Because at this point, they want to get a bylaw to town meeting. And they're concerned if they start putting in a lot of those, the provisions that were in the original draft that they had, that it was going to take some time to get it through our process and our report back to the Board of Selectmen for the inclusion in the warrant.
Patrick, do you want to elaborate on that if you?
Yeah, it's my understanding that Christine is largely correct, that I think the zoning table of uses needs to have a number 24 under all districts added that allows for short-term rentals. And then the rest of the bylaw, the separate bylaw and short-term rentals that we wrote is a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. So the only thing that's zoning is the table of uses, and that's what we need you to refer to us.
And this would be vote to advertise. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's like, just like any other zoning bylaw revision, has to follow that process.
Do we do this without having seen it in writing?
You do have it in writing. It's in your agenda.
Well, yeah, okay.
Here's that need to move forward with this as quickly as possible.
I'm not disagreeing. I, I understand the, the urgency. I, I'm just trying to make sure we, we act on this in a way that comports with, you know, proper procedure. So what, what kind of motion do we need to make?
We need. Your motion is to amend the zoning bylaws in section B by inserting a new number 24, allowing short-term rentals as an allowable use in all zoning districts.
Okay. You make a motion, Patrick?
No, I can't. I'm just telling you what you, you know, you asked the question. I think that's it.
Yeah, there's, I make that motion.
Well, how did we come up with a number 24? I don't understand that.
It's a new. What Donna and Michael did. I don't know.
It comes after 23. It's a new one.
425, which I think is auto repair shops. Sorry, that was a joke.
Oh, I got, I got you. Okay. Yeah, all right.
Marijuana Cooperative. Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Everybody clear on the motion? I'll call the roll. Hang on. I'm gonna take notes. I vote yes. Christine?
Yes. Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Wayne? Was that an I?
Aye.
And Marie? One, two, three, four, five, six. So it passes unanimously six, zero. Is that good enough, Patrick? Okay. He's happy.
Can we adjourn, Bill? Sorry?
Not yet.
What, what did you want to add, Christine?
The putting Jeff Lacy's response on the town website. Jeff Lacy wrote an article explaining some of the issues with, that had been raised regarding natural resources, historic preservation zoning. And it has some good information, and we just need to vote to be able to allow that to go on the, I assume, the planning board section of the town website. So if people are trying to learn about this bylaw that is certainly needs a lot of explanation and understanding because it's very complicated. And I think having this, what he wrote, and we can go through it and I can read it or.
No, I don't think we need to read it. We all received it. Jennifer sent it around. I'd like to make a motion to put this.
Have a little bit of discussion on this before you make.
No, we can talk after I make the motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to put this paper by Jeff Lacy in response to a Stockbridge Updates article on the planning board section of the town website. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Kate, what's on your mind?
Um, so I just, for the record, and I would like the minutes to reflect this. I took a look at this document. It's over a thousand words and it's not.
That's why it has to go on the website. She won't publish it.
It's not clearly labeled as to what is from Stockbridge Updates. And other than the black and red, I think you need to be much more clear about what you're, you're quoting from Stockbridge Updates. And instead of JL, I would use, spell out his name so that's clear. And if Christine is the one, this is also obsolete because this is based on a draft that was many eons ago. So it really, to me, it seems very confusing that you would, would post this on the town website at this point.
I think the only thing that's out of date are the references to transfer of development rights. And is there also the zoning, the bonus?
Yeah, and Christine is no longer the contact, so she's going off the board, so that should be taken.
For now. She is for now. Until she's resigns or is, her term ends. She's still the contact. Let's take out the reference to transfer of development rights since it is not, as you say, part of the current draft. I don't think there's anything else that's out of, out of date. And I think it's pretty clear how he's referred to and what he's talking about. This is not an ad hominem attack on anybody. It's an effort to, by the consultant to clarify what we're doing.
I think it would be much stronger if you just put up something by Jeff Lacy talking about what he's doing rather than, I, I mean, I just, to me, this seems like such a negative thing to do. So I, I, I prefer that you just put up one of Jeff Lacy's documents on, on his, on his, on his work.
Kate, the reason we have to do this is that there is so much misinformation. And we need to have references so people understand. We certainly can put Jeff Lacy's documents up there. I think there are a lot of them. But when I go downtown, I am asked a tremendous number of questions. And it refers back to this and other articles that have been written. And people don't understand the facts. So this is just an opportunity to put the facts according to the person who has the expertise and is writing the bylaw. And so that hopefully it can create a constructive dialogue on what this bylaw is trying to accomplish.
Yeah. Is there any other comment about this document? I'd like to make a motion to put this, has it already been, there's already a motion. I'd like to amend my motion to reflect that the reference to transfer of development rights section be eliminated since it's not any longer relevant.
And, and a little blurb just describing who Jeff Lacy is or what he's doing for us.
Sure.
For, for people who don't know Jeff Lacy.
Right. Yep. So with those changes, I'm gonna, the, it's been moved and seconded. I'll call the roll. I vote yes. Christine?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Nancy?
Yes.
Marie?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
That's six. It's five, five to one for posting as, as amended. Okay. Is there any other business?
Do we want to have another meeting with Jeff next week before the meeting on the 12th?
No.
Well.
Emphatically.
I mean, are we ready to go to, for the meeting on the 12th then?
Do we know?
Sorry? Sorry, say again.
Who is, who is leading that meeting on the 12th?
Jeff and Randall.
Jeff and Randall.
Yes, they, they're both free and it seemed like a good opportunity to hear from the town. So I, but at some point I thought I heard tonight that, that we might want another meeting. But I think we're pretty much, we've got something to take out and we're probably not going to make a whole lot more progress before the meeting on the 12th. And we have a long planning board agenda, meeting at our next meeting on the 4th, so.
Do you want to see if they would like to meet with us? If they have questions with us?
I mean. As far as I know, they felt that they were pretty, um, they were comfortable explaining their bylaw.
Okay, are we, are we paying Randall for this?
That's part of his negotiation, negotiated contract that he was working with Jeff and he would be available for public meetings to help explain the process because he has more expertise having worked on these issues for a longer period of time than Jeff. So they'll both be participating.
Any other business? I, so I guess the answer, Christine, is we won't, we won't hold another special meeting.
Good. I move to adjourn. Be, I'm beating Kate to it this time.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, thank you, everybody. See you next week.
Thanks, Bill.